The regular meeting of the Mishawaka Common Council for Monday, August 18th, 2025 will please come to order. Good evening, those of you who are in attendance, welcome. If you would, please take a moment to check your cellphone to make sure that you have placed it on silent or vibrate. And for those of you who are participating remotely, we welcome you as well. Members of the public are asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting. At the appropriate point in the meeting, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting any comments that they may wish to make, one person at a time. All persons making public comments are asked to first state their name and address for the record, and after completing the comment, members of the public participating remotely are once again asked to place their microphone on mute, and we thank all of you for your cooperation with us this evening. At this time, if you would, please join us in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hazen?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Ms. Hahn?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Violi?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
All present in the council chambers?
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of August 4th, 2025. Are there any additional additions or corrections? In hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as received from the Clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorial.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a letter from the Board of Zoning Appeals regarding the recommendations from their August 12th, 2025 meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals was held on the above referenced date, at which time the following use variance was considered. Appeal number 2525, an appeal submitted by Hartwood Holdings LLC requesting a use variance for outside storage. The board with a vote of 4 to 0 provided a favorable recommendation. This is signed by Donowitz, Administrative Planner. We also have a letter from the City Plan Commission regarding their recommendations from their August 12th meeting. Honorable members, a regular meeting of the Mishawaka Plan Commission was held on the above date, at which time the following petitions were considered. Petition 25-10, a request submitted by the City of Mishawaka and School City of Mishawaka requesting a vacation of right of way for Ballard Street, south of Vestula due to realignment. The commission with a vote of 7 to 0 recommended approval. This is signed by Donowitz, Administrative Planner.
Thank you. This evening, we have no report of any special committee, so we'll move into ordinances on first reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana. This is vacation of right of way due to realignment, Ballard Street, south of Vestula Road.
Proposed ordinance 2025-19 will be assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2025-20, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka to prohibit the use of public records for commercial purposes.
Proposed ordinance 2025-20 will be assigned to the Personnel Committee. Resolutions?
Resolution 2025-20, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, approving a petition of the Mishawaka Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 811 and 815 East McKinley Avenue.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on proposed resolution 2025-20. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Terry Lang from the Whitman Office. Our address is 1402 Mishawaka Avenue in South Bend, representing the petitioner here. The petition here before you is to allow for outside storage and also for a rear yard variances and things that we had gotten from the Board of Zoning Appeals. It's kind of a unique site. There's an existing older industrial building that sits two feet off of the rear property line. So instead of asking for a variance for two foot, we've proposed a building addition that will stay away from that southerly property line by 10 feet to allow for some space for the existing fence that's there. There's an existing seven-foot fence, as well as leave some room for landscaping between the building and that existing seven-foot fence there. The existing apartment buildings to the south, they're called townhouses, they're all owned by one person, so it's more of an apartment project than it is townhouses. Their existing fence along Went Street is one foot off of the back of the sidewalk, and we had asked for that similar thing. We had worked with the planning department, and we've agreed to move our fence in from that and ask for a three-foot area there. What it amounts to is on that east side of that older building, there are overhead doors, and we're going to end up having to replace the pavement, and we're going to need room to be able to swing vehicles into those overhead doors. So we're trying to give as much room as possible for that, as well as allow for a little bit of retention area there when we go through the design stage for the drainage portion of it. We had also at that hearing had a conversation with the planning department with regards to, this project will probably be done in two phases. The southerly portion where the existing buildings are is what is being done first, so they can, obviously, the building needs a new roof and needs some improvements around the outside so that they could move their operation. They've outgrown their location up in Granger and have wanted to move to Mishawaka to be able to expand their business, and with long-range plans, may even do further development on the north half of the property. But right now, the plan is just to develop that southerly portion for their tree service When storms come, they take trees down and branches, and they need to haul it away. They're going to temporarily have them in the yard area here that's proposed to be stone. Some of those logs can be, you know, three-foot in diameter. Dropping those on asphalt or concrete will just destroy them in a matter of a few weeks. And what we're proposing, that if it being a stone-type material, it'll allow them to regrade it as things are periodically brought in, processed, and then ultimately hauled away then from there. So the stone portion of it is something, is more of a common sense type thing, that they don't want to have to replace it year after year after year for that. And with the existing building that's there, they're going to be paving the portion of it where their vehicles will be parked, will pull in. That portion is strictly going to be used for where they'd be storing that material on a short-term basis then. And the other item that came up was the fencing. Midway, we've got a fence that runs east-west across the middle of the site. We're going to put a slatted-type material between the fence to kind of screen that from McKinley Highway, even though the businesses on the north side don't have any slats on their fences. But their storage yards for those businesses, for the Datalink and for Pemberton Davis, all of their stuff is way back behind their buildings. Ours would be a little bit more visible, and we've talked with the planning staff, and that was kind of an agreement we came to at the meeting, that we could live with that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have with regards to the petition.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lang? Mr. Violi?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the staff report, I saw where it says that the planning staff would still want to see the landscaping, the seven-foot high shrubs or trees on the south side, except up where the building butts up against.
That was the landscaping I was talking about, between the existing seven-foot fence and the proposed building addition along that southerly side there, yes.
But you will do that on both sides of the building? You know, because there's a little bit of an area?
Yeah, it'll be on both sides of it, yes.
Because there's just a little area on the west or east side of the building, it looks like.
Correct, yes.
So it'll be on both sides of the building, the shrubs and trees or whatever?
Yes, there will be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Benicki?
Thank you. I'm a little concerned about the temporary storage of all these trees you cut down. When I drive through different cities, similar to ours, there's some places that are supposed to be temporary, but we always have storms, so there's always going to be rotation. There's never, it's never going to end. So I'm really concerned about having all that there. And do they plan on cutting some of this up, splicing it up and selling it as firewood, and selling firewood out of this location as well?
That, I never had that discussion, whether it was going to be used for firewood.
I'd love to know it.
I know that a lot of it will be mulched, and then it can be sold as mulch to be used, you know, on people's yard, around their yards and things like that. But at this point, it's just as, in fact, I had a huge 36-inch oak tree in my yard that I had removed just before the very first storm this spring, and the large trunk of the tree left a nasty indentation when it came down in the yard. And I saw the need for what they were asking for, just firsthand with what I saw in my yard. And it's not something, it will be constantly rotating, yes. When there's a storm, they're going to be bringing material in, cutting it up, process what's necessary, and it'll leave the site then. In the future, their long-range plan, in talking with them, that northern portion of it, if things continue to develop and grow, they'd like to turn that into maybe a future, kind of like McKinley landscaping, a place where you could go and buy bushes and shrubs and things like that. But that's longer range down the road, and at this point, we're only concentrating on that southerly half of it. And that's also one of the reasons why we agreed to put the fence with the slats in it midway down through there to kind of make it so it's not visible from McKinley Highway. It is zoned industrial, so it kind of falls in that use, but I understand what you're saying there.
Well, and I mean, that stuff can be stacked, you know, very high, so, you know, a 10-foot fence ain't going to block that stuff. I mean, it's just going to be a growing fire hazard at some point.
Well, we have, we have fire protection on site. We have fire hydrants right there on site, so we do have that to our benefit right there. That's why it's not going to be stained on site any longer than it takes to process it and move on from there to, you know, get it cut up and get it moved out. Because storms come by periodically. This spring, we had, I think, three of them in a matter of three weeks there, and it was a constant, you know, removal of trees and branches and stuff, in talking with the owners of the property. So, yeah, we're trying to make sure that it does not, otherwise, you would end up with a huge pile that would be a nuisance. That's kind of why we want to make sure it's not, we want to be a good neighbor. We've talked with the Wealth Management Office to the west about what we were proposing to do, and I don't know if we'll hear from them or not with regards to it, but we've been upfront with everybody with what we're proposing to do out there on the site.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Volker?
Excuse me, I have a question, and then I wanted to make a statement. The fence, it's going to be halfway across the property between the north and south?
It would run east-west about halfway from McKinley back to the south property line.
And how tall will that fence be?
We're anticipating it to be six foot.
Okay, and that will be a privacy fence?
It will be a chain link fence with the slats in it, so you can't see through it.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to, I actually had emergency tree service at the end of March, and it just so happened that we had talked to this company about a week beforehand about taking some trees down, and they did a great job for us. They chipped up, our trees are 130 years old, so they were gigantic trees, and they chipped up most of it on site, and then, you know, took the bigger trunk pieces away, but most of it was dealt with on our property and then removed from the property. So I would anticipate that that's the general way that they...
You experienced the exact same thing that I did, because the large 36-inch pieces could not be ground up, but the branches and stuff like that were.
Right.
So it was easily hauled off, and then the large things will be disposed of, easier off-site where they would be able to process them.
I wanted to add one other thing, though, Terry. Sometimes when you think about landscaping companies and tree companies, let me just put it another way. I found this company to be very, very professional, and I've actually talked with the owner about the company, about what they wanted to do here some time ago, and I think I may have talked to somebody in the planning department about it, too. But they just came across to me as being very professional. They were very professional for us to work with in an emergency, and they also had good resources, because we needed some special stuff, and they had good connections. So I just, I just want to vouch for them as a company, that I found them to be very professional. I think they'd be a good addition to Mishawaka.
In my situation, half of the tree branches had, they had to have a climber go up and cut it and drop it in sections from that, and there aren't very many services that have climbers that will go up and bring trees down in sections. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. If you've addressed this, forgive me, but with the processing, how much of any given day or week will the sounds of something chipping wood and shredding, that type of thing, be going on? You're not next to a neighborhood, but there's one kind of on the other side of the buildings?
On the south side, you have the apartments to the south. To the west, you have the storage units, which covers about two-thirds of that westerly property line, and then you have the wealth management up at the north end up there. A lot of that, Mr. Carroll, will be probably by, you know, how frequently storms are. You know, that's probably what's going to drive how often there may be a need for it.
So you don't see this as being, even in their routine tree-taking, it's not going to be an all-day, every-day chainsaws and chippers?
I don't anticipate it. A lot of it's because, I mean, we went for the last, what, five, six weeks without any rain, without a storm, and in that situation, there wouldn't be anything going on during that type of a timeframe.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Lang? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Just with regard to this matter. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed Is there anyone with us this evening who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Hazen?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
No.
Mr. Emmons?
No. Excuse me, no.
Ms. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The resolution passes 7 to 2. Resolution R. 2025-21, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, adding parcels to the city's property acquisition list associated with the previously approved Common Council Resolution 2014-07, which approved an order of the City of Mishawaka Plan Commission approving a certain declaratory resolution, an amendment to the boundaries of the Northwest Area Improvement Project, consolidation of the south-site Economic Development Area, and the Northwest Improvement Project into one consolidated area improvement project, and an amendment to the economic development plan for the consolidated area improvement project adopted by the City of Mishawaka Redevelopment Commission.
Thank you. With that, we will now open the public hearing on proposed resolution 2025-21. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, Ken Prince, Director of Planning and Community Development for the city. As we've done multiple times this year, in order to acquire property, because we are using TIF funds, state law requires that we add that property to an acquisition list. In this case, 1107 South Union Street, it was acquired by the current owner, I believe, at a sure sale. When they acquired it, we reached through code enforcement to see if we could inquire about buying it before the property was reinvested in. The purchaser was willing, and we essentially offered them the, what they were paying taxes on, the assessed value of the property. So that assessed valuation is $174,000, and I know that's just for information, your role is to put it on the acquisition list, but I wanted to state that for the record. This property is two doors down, located at the intersection, the southwest corner of South Union and 12th Street. This is two down from the 331 Inn that we acquired previously earlier this year, and so, or even last year. So in any event, there's only one home remaining then between 12th Street and 13th Street on the west side of the street that we would need to acquire at some point in time. So this is really advantageous, even without the future widening of Union Street, because it has a small parking area that requires you to back up immediately onto Union Street. It's really a hazard, and it'll be good to get out of there. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Prince? Mr. Emmons?
Not on that acquisition, but also on a purchase of property that we acquired, which was the 331 Inn.
Mm-hmm.
When is that going to come down?
I can't tell you, but we are waiting for NIPSCO to confirm that the gas has been shut off from the property, and we were given notice. So I was out last week on vacation, and Roger Shields, who was checking on it, was out today, so I should know tomorrow. I'll provide an update as soon as I can to the council regarding the removal, but the holdup on that has been the shut off of the gas line. We can't proceed with demolition until the gas is shut off. And I know because of the narrowness there, that they were having issues with shutting off the gas, and that's been the holdup for both that and the former greenhouse where we've removed the asbestos siding as you go further down. Both of those were bid at the same time and will be coming down at the same time by the same contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward. Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone with us this evening who wishes to speak in opposition? Please come forward. And is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. Hazen?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Ms. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Resolution passes 9 to 0.
Thank you. This evening, we have no ordinances on second reading, so we'll move into privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to the podium to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor. Please, may come forward. If you want to come to the podium, ma'am, we'll be happy to hear you. If you would, please start out by stating your name and address for the record.
Karen Hoffman, can you hear me?
If you can, move that microphone a little bit closer to you. Sometimes it's hard for us to hear. Thank you.
Karen Hoffman, 715 East 10th Street, Mishawaka, 46544.
Okay.
Did you ask if it was any item to talk about?
Yes, anything that's not on the agenda.
This is my first time here. Thank you for having this, and thank you for doing what you do for the city. I appreciate it. I'm just learning things. We didn't learn this in school, a lot of things, but...
Ma'am, at the risk of being rude, I'm having trouble hearing you, and I suspect that others are, yeah, and I don't want you to have to lean in to eat the microphone, but if you could speak a little bit louder, that would probably be best. Thank you.
I've been emotional for quite some time, but I'm doing my best to bring up what I feel is fair, and I'm hearing from a lot of other people, but nobody has come. When, August 14th, I had a hearing upstairs, and I had an issue with a dog that I was watching, and I was building a fence, and it went under the fence, and in result, she let her dogs out, pit bulls, and it mauled and killed my sister's dog, which was only seven pounds. I have put up a wooden fence, tore my shoulder out of socket, have postings, no trespassing... I have put up a wooden fence, tore my shoulder out of socket, have postings, no trespassing, beware of dog in my front window, on my fence posts. It was a mistake. Poor judgment on his behalf, but he was a good dog. Never, all of them, Ruby and Emmy, never bit nobody, never problem, never. And Humane Society tells me about, there is no such thing as emotional support animal. And now a lot of places are stopping you from having them with you. I have PTSD. I have severe depression. I have cancer, diabetes, mixed other things. And she helps me greatly. She has been for 10 years. I have doctor letters. And on August 14th, Humane Society says that it's a scam, that it's not real. So I'm kind of shocked. But what my point is, I know Doby was wrong. I know he trespassed, and the result of him making a poor judgment cost him his life. I took care of him. Nobody notified me. I couldn't find him. I picked him up, bathed him, brushed his hair, set him in front of the TV like he liked to watch TV, then I drove him to be cremated at $142. And I feel great remorse. I have walked the fence, but I was super sick, temperature over 100, and my cancer medicines give me an additional sweet hot flash right in the middle where you don't want it. So I come to know that the city has codes to keep the place safe, clean, orderly. I get it. Doby didn't deserve to die. And the codes that I'm asking you to look at, Ken Witkowski, Director of Code Enforcement, said that you guys were going to look at changing the code in January 14, 14-1. I'm unfamiliar with that stuff. But I think as a first-time offender with no record, Humane Society came back, and I was going to bring Ruby and Alfie. They go to church, they go everywhere. They're adorable. They're tiny. And Humane Society was going to deem them dangerous animals. I about passed out. So I went through great lengths, tried to find a lawyer, got an affidavit, got 12 people to write papers. The affidavit was notarized. I got seven people to come in. Nobody could talk. They barely heard me. I spent my last dollar on pictures of the fence line that was taken care of. That didn't matter. I'm okay with them searching the property, looking at my house. I worked very hard at it. But I would like the code to be addressed, that if you're a first-time offender, and my kids, she could not pull them pit bulls off of my kid. And the Humane Society told me that their dogs, two pit bulls, shook them like a ragdoll. They punctured his lungs, and they broke his neck, his back, his organs, his brain. And he suffered greatly because he suffocated. Then they left him there by himself, took their dog to the vet, and that's how I found him. I think there should be an place where if it was just the first episode, and I think by Doby dying and the fee of $142 of cremation is punishment enough, I punish myself greatly because I feel responsible. I always take care of the fence line. But they had a hearing. This was all new, unfamiliar grounds for me. And I went to it with the people and the letters and the pictures, and they changed it from dangerous to a public nuisance. And it still meant $100 per animal for the rest of their life. If you seen them and known them, you'd know they would never hurt nobody. And one of them never went under the fence, but they're charging them anyways. And I think that's unfair. And I think it's unfair for the rest of their life. Ruby do has a collapsed trachea. Her husband Alfie, he's frail. I'm glad I get to keep them, but I want the codes of animals kind of looked at and changed because that was a first-time incident, and I feel it's an extreme punishment to keep my kids. And on it, it does say, if I don't pay the $300, and I don't have a job because I have cancer, they will take my kids, impound them, penalize me, court hearings, fines, jail. And I'm like, I'm going to pass out. So the option was to surrender my babies that I love.
Well, ma'am, if I can, let me try to address your concern. First of all, we're all very sympathetic to what you've gone through here with regard to everything that you've shared with us this evening. And the information that you received from Mr. Witkowski, our Director of Code Enforcement, was accurate. Actually, I've been involved along with my colleague, Mr. Carroll, in taking a look at our animal control ordinance. And it's, we're really doing a comprehensive review of it. So it's not just the issues that you're raising, it's the ordinance in general that we're looking at. And while I can't promise you that there's going to be any particular outcome that, based on the information that we've heard from you this evening, that will, that will impact how we revise that ordinance, I will promise you that we'll take into account what you've shared with us and look to see what if, what needs to be adjusted along the lines of the issues you've raised, along with all the other issues that we want to try to address as we're revising that animal control ordinance. So again, we're very sympathetic to it. This really isn't the place for us to get into the specifics of the hearing that you had and those details, and all of us are sympathetic to the loss that you've suffered. But while we can't get into that specific situation and that specific hearing, I do promise you that we'll take into, take to heart what you have shared with us and that we'll incorporate that into the work that we're going to do to revise the animal control ordinance. I wouldn't even anticipate that it's going to take as long as January. My hope would be that it would be sooner than that. But we want to try to do a really good job of addressing it so that it's a good, solid ordinance that serves the needs of Mishawaka. And it's a really long one, as you know, I would suspect from having read it, that it's pretty long and involved. But we're working diligently on it, and I promise you that we will continue to move forward with that and try to get something on the agenda for council consideration and public input as soon as is possible. Mr. Carroll, is there anything that you want to add to that?
No, I think you covered just about everything I did. But, yeah, we're very close to getting through the full review. And just to reiterate what you said, it is 55 pages long in its draft form, and so we're going to make sure that we go over it and get it right.
I would just like to add that I know a lot of pit bulls. My sister's son had one, gentle as a baby. I know a lot of other ones that are not so. But if they have an dangerous animal known, that they at least have to post a sign, beware of dog. Because if you don't know, you don't know.
And the whole concept of animals that are dangerous to other animals, to human beings, to all of the above, is an issue that we're looking at very closely as part of this review of this ordinance. So again, I promise you that we'll take to heart what you've shared with us this evening and that I'm really confident that we're going to have a better animal control ordinance once we complete this process than we have right now.
Does that include?
Well, I really don't, as Mr. Carroll said, it's a 55-page ordinance, so I don't think it's really going to be the best use of our time to try to get into too many details this evening. And certainly, we can talk off the floor about it further if you'd like. Is there anything else that you'd like to share with us before I invite some other speakers to the podium? Okay. Well, again, thank you for sharing what you've shared with us. We're sympathetic to what you're going through, and I promise you yet again that we will take it into consideration as we consider revisions to our animal control ordinance. But thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for your time and my first experience here. I appreciate everybody. God bless you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak under privilege of the floor? Then is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the Thank you. With that, we'll move into unfinished business, of which there is none new business. Is there any new business to come before the council? Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President. The West End First District meeting on the 21st, which is Thursday, it's a little bit different this time. Instead of having a guest speaker, we're going to have a tour of the new sports facility. So anybody that's interested, you'd meet at St. Bevel's by quarter after 6:00 to board the bus at 6:30. You'll be transported there and back. And also, we'll have West End donuts before and after. So everyone is invited to be at. Should be an interesting evening, and if you haven't seen that sports center, it's in all. So all of you are welcome this Thursday at quarter after 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brimonte?
No announcement, just a question for Mr. Emmons. What is the capacity of the bus, and how many seats are available?
I think it's 42.
Forty-two total? Okay. All right.
If not, you can sit on one another's lap. So it's an interesting, it should be an interesting evening.
Beautiful building. Thank you.
Thank you. Other new business? Then if there is no other new business, come before the council. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Don't move.
We're adjourned. Thank you, folks.